...to the late DM. Like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Fleming, go ahead and conduct roll call. John with the present. William Redd. Betty Gilson. Jimmy Doyle. Darren Timmons. Paul Watson. Can you please form in? Standing and put a flag to the ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Hurst is going to give the implication.
Sir God, thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you, Lord, for these people in our city. Lord, we ask you for wisdom. Or we just ask you that you just bless this town and help us all to make wise decisions.
All right, at this point in time, we'll be adopting the agenda. I will point out there was a clerical error. Not a Jesse error, just a backspace button error. On Ed Kirk addressing the council referencing dogs on some agendas that were sent out, that was inadvertently taken off. But it was on the agenda for the previous meeting under old business that he wished to speak to the council. So we are going to acknowledge that error and let him speak this evening.
And then here's a close session, is that still on or is that off?
No, there is no close session this evening. At this point in time, we'll entertain motion to adopt the agenda. Okay, we have a motion by Betty to adopt the agenda. As amended, Betty? Okay, as amended. Do we have a second? Second by Jimmy. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes four. Okay. And ratified bills received and to approve the minutes. Now, this can be done by consent agenda. And by consent agenda, that means you can approve both or we can separate them and approve them one at a time. Open this up for council. Is there any discussion on bills?
Council members, please speak up.
Okay. John on the back asked the council member to please project their voice so they can be heard and more recorded properly. Any other questions on the bills?
Yes, this utility service company, utility services, three thousand dollars. What do you want to use that?
Those are for water tanks.
The water tank.
Jenny King.
You guys speak up so we can hear you.
He was referencing a Mrs. King went to mules training in Springfield, Missouri, and she was reimbursed for a mileage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, track one, track two for services. I don't care if it's a K and M or a change. K and M was for four hundred and some change. And that is for oil changes and fluid changes to our, both of our trash trucks.
Okay, is there any other discussion or questions about the bills?
We have a motion to approve the bills.
Lane segmented by Betty. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes four zero.
There was a couple of things that I pointed out in the last meeting with Jesse. Did you make those changes?
All right. If there is... Is there any question on the accuracy of the minutes? If there are not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I made a motion to approve the minutes. And that was with the change that I had told Jesse earlier.
Okay, we have a motion from Betty segmented by Jimmy. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Next thing we have is... We have Mr. Ed Kirk to address the council and reference some dogs. And Mr. Kirk, I believe you were going to have Ms. Schultz as well to speak on your behalf. You were going to present some material and she was going to speak on your behalf.
Mayor, if there's no objection, I would like to have Ms. Diane Schultz speak for me. She is well aware of the situation.
The council has been aware of your request
Okay, I've written down everything that Mr. Kirk wants to be said, so...
And just for the record, so I do have it, Mr. Kirk did submit some documents. I think those have submitted to the council.
And you guys did get the packet, right? This only will take about maybe two, three minutes. What I'll be referring to is the city ordinances... Please don't. What I'll be referring to is city ordinances 415, section seventeen and twenty, and city ordinance 215.030, 040, and 050. This is going to deal with the nuisance ordinances that are on the books about dog barking. Mr. Kirk has lived at 107 East Fifth Street since 1968 to present with the exception of his military career. Shortly after Mr. Hurst and Ms. Messenger moved into 105 East Fifth Street, the shepherd owned by Mr. Hurst came from his yard and attacked Missy, a Jack Russell owned by Mr. Kirk on July 22, 2015. And on July 23, 2015, Mr. Kirk took her to the vet and x-rays were taken for a puncture wound from the shepherd that belonged to Mr. Hurst. This generated a vet bill in the amount of $185.23. Then approximately two weeks later, Mr. Kirk's dog Spanky, a fox terrier, was laying in Mr. Kirk's yard, and the shepherd came after him and rolled him. At that time, Mr. Kirk told Mr. Hurst that he would kill the dog if it was in his yard again. Mr. Kirk has called repeatedly about the barking to the Dixon Police Department to complain about the nuisance and has submitted several police reports which generated nothing to date but a citation received by Melissa Messenger, her significant other, and was addressed at the November 7, 2016 council meeting. You guys should have that paper there.
Yes.
To date, we do not have an operational dog pound to use if quarantined or hold if needed, and I am sure the other local communities will not hold our problem for us. Police are not writing their reports correctly as there is nowhere in either 408 or 215 ordinances a time stipulation as referenced by Deputy North from 9:00 PM to 6:00 PM restriction period for dog barking. Mr. Kirk has a medical condition that he needs to rest periodically throughout the day. And with the nuisance of the dog barking next door when they are left outside prevents him from getting the much-needed rest. He doesn't have the leisure of having visitors for a barbecue or any other yard activity as the dogs will bark during the visit if left outside. If Mr. Hurst cannot abide by 408 and 215 ordinances in question here, what makes you think he will uphold any other city ordinance if he was to be elected as an alderman for which he ran this past election? It is time for the council to start acting upon the existing ordinances 408 and 215. Mr. Kirk is a citizen of this community and is entitled to the same respect and courtesy as every other citizen. Time for council and Dixon Police Department to step up and do their jobs. After all, you are supposed to represent and protect all who live within the city limits of Dixon and to uphold and have knowledge of the city ordinances as written in the book. Now, I'm going to add a few things. I talked to Mr. Frankel this afternoon before, after I got off work. He indicated that Mr. Hurst had purchased some collars, some stun collars, right?
In October.
Up until that point, I will honestly say that he's kind of remedied the problem somewhat. But now, we have a problem with the Cobhorns on the other side of the fence, with their dogs agitating his dogs. So it's just a continual problem. And we do have ordinances on the books. And if the police can do their job without anyone telling them not to, then we can get this resolved. Otherwise, had no one interjected and given, you know, an instruction not to enforce the ordinances, then we wouldn't be here tonight. So if the police can enforce the ordinances and do their job, then we can get on with other things besides this. Any questions?
I got a question. How come Mr. Ed Kirk doesn't want to talk to me personally about it?
I don't know. You have to talk to him about that. I can't, I can't speak for Mr. Kirk on that yet.
Back in October, I purchased the collar, a barking collar. And as far as I've known, he hasn't had any problems. He's not one time come to complain to me or wanted to talk to me. All he wants to do...
I can't answer that for you.
All he wants to do is yell on the screen and make my wife cry.
Well, from what I understand, this problem has been...
In the first place, to begin all this, when I first moved in, his dogs wasn't on leases. And Mr. Ed Kirk, you know they come in my yard.
No, it's about at that time when neighbors were talking.
Yes, they did.
No, they did not.
I'm out there in the yard when they did.
No, they did not, man.
May I say something, please, about this issue, Diane? Since this took place, I mean, we want to talk to each other anyway. When I move into a place and I have neighbors with dogs... My name is Maria Mittenberger. I live here in Dixon, 405 North Down Street. When I move in somewhere and I have a dog, I introduce myself to my neighbors. If they have dogs, I make sure that the animals get to know each other. If you're a responsible owner of animals, that's what you do. You try to socialize them, just like you try to socialize your children. There are means to train dogs to where they don't hurt each other, attack each other, even bark. You can make a dog a dog. You can stop him from barking if you train him right. He does not have to have shock sense. It's a matter of the owner taking the dog and putting the time into it and training it. Especially with a German Shepherd. I have trained German Shepherds.
I understand. Here's what I'm saying.
It's hard, you know. It can be hard. You two need to get together. And you really, no, you really, you two need to get together. If you want to live there, you need to talk to one another and try to fix this problem. Otherwise, it just escalates more and more. You're going to move into a civil lawsuit. This is just another one of those things.
Well, I went out and purchased a very expensive dog collar. And as far as I knew, the problem was over. Now, is there still a problem with my white dog?
Yes. I got him right here. He started again.
That doesn't mean nothing to me. That's my neighbor's dog. She got it on there.
On video?
Gary Coburn, three dogs outside and they barked all night long. My dogs are in...
And at night, they shouldn't be barking. They should not be barking at night. Because dogs bark at night. That is a quality of life offense. So the police will do something about that.
I would like to bring us all back to the middle if we're going at this point in time.
Can I interject something real quick now that we got some fire?
Very quickly.
From what I understand from Mr. Kirk, this has been ongoing since July 2015. Now, when you're dealing with a time factor of talking about almost two and a half years, okay? It can be a little bit much, all right? And if nothing's being taken care of, no one's, no one's doing their part to... Mr. Hurst, had you done it a little bit sooner to get the collars, maybe things would have been different. Mr. Kirk is agitated, I mean, because it's been such an ongoing problem. And then, of course, you know, the police are telling him, "Okay, now, don't interrupt me, please." The ordinances that are in play should be ones that should be upheld by the Dixon Police Department, okay? And they're not. And that's why we have ordinances, so we can contain and control and have a law-abiding society, okay? And I agree. You and Mr. Kirk should sit down and try to make some, come to some kind of concession because you are going to be neighbors, okay?
I don't know what else I could do for him.
Well, like I said, had this been...
Have you given him a gift?
I don't know. I'll talk to him and we'll see if he'll come up. All right? Okay, so I can give you, I can give you that much. That's all I can do. I mean, I can, I can leave him alone.
I mean, I went out and bought a collar. You can come up with my dog doesn't bark when the collar's on. It shocks him.
All I know is this summer...
He barked one time with that collar on and he jumped three foot off the ground.
This summer, when I came to help him with his harvesting bee honey, that's okay. You're interrupting me. You're interrupting me. I gave you a chance to talk, please. Every morning when I came over to go out to the farm with him to help him to harvest bee honey, your dogs would rush to that fence. And I'm not exaggerating, okay? I'm telling you what...
I don't know my dog does.
Okay, now, here, you're interrupting me again, okay?
I got three kids that they need to protect.
I do think that we should probably direct the comments towards council at this point.
Here's, here's what needs to be done. Council, you need to come together and you need to figure out how to resolve this problem, okay? I mean, seriously, you really have to. And for Marshall Frankel, he should be allowed to enforce the laws. They're on the books, as long as they're on the books. I don't care if you pull them out of the books or out of the book or not. As long as it's not been abolished, as long as it has not been amended, it is still an active, alive ordinance, just like I'm standing here, okay?
It is not in line with state laws, so that is why we have been told not to.
Who's telling you not to?
What ordinance is that, Gary?
Let's see about the state law.
The law, part of the nuisance law.
What happens with all the ordinance?
Uh, Gary? But they've been... Our state law has something about quality of life offense. This is obviously a quality of life offense for some people. That's in Police 101.
That is also for attorneys and justice.
Well, it is also a similar rule. We don't want to go that far, but...
I don't enforce civil law. And that, and that is a civil issue.
But you enforce ordinances, and that's what's necessary. When the ordinances are on the books, they're to be enforced until they are amended or launched. That's how it stands.
Not my mistake.
It gets dismissed in court if it's not in line with the law.
Well, then, when we come to that point, then we'll know what we have to do with the ordinances. Am I correct?
We've been at that point. We've been at that point, and there are provisions being made to the nuisance ordinance.
Okay, but until then, they apply. They have to, they have to.
They cannot be enforced.
How can you not enforce an ordinance that's active?
Because it is not in line with state law, which means if Gary were to write me a ticket and he writes me a ticket that is not in line with state law, as soon as, when I go into court, I say, "This does not meet the requirements that the state has put out," then at that point in time...
So the state doesn't have any nuisance law on the books? What you're saying is the Missouri revised statutes, there's no nuisance laws? Because this has to be, this had to have been based on something or otherwise it couldn't have been passed.
Right. They insist, for Senate Bill 5, five, seven, two, revise restricted the abilities of the court in a certain fashion, which then affects the ability for these words that currently has along the court with the state law that says that through A, B, C, D, E. So until that's changed, it's on the book, but the penalty phase is not sufficient to stand up to the court's balance of what happened within those things or how the processes were. Does it go to, in front of a board? Does it work? Does whoever has the board have to develop process? Things like that. So until those things are unable to change, we're stuck. Now, they were set forth. There were things added that weren't applied by the city. I would have, I mean, I thought, um, somebody decided I should then change it again. I just learned of that, so now I'm looking to change it again with basic those things, so...
So what are you saying now? Because you're in the process of fixing something, this is just, this ordinance doesn't apply?
It can't. You can't defy it. Maybe January 14th, you'll have it there.
Okay, well, then, if you can't institute a nuisance ordinance, then maybe there's a disturbance of the peace or something. For that effect, it needs instituted until something gets done with the ordinances.
Mr. Mayor?
Because I'm telling you, the Cobhorns have to have something done with their dogs, too.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, did you say there's a Missouri law on that, on these ordinances?
There's Senate Bill 5 and 572. We basically, Ferguson happened. When Ferguson issue happened, the state legislature presented Senate Bill 5 and Senate Bill 5, seven, two. And they restricted how municipalities can operate with a lot of their ordinances and basically said you have to rewrite a lot of them. We're in the process of rewriting them. Come up with several different variations, and we're still working through that. Now, when it comes to these changes, these changes worked two years ago. They were within this year. That Senate Bill 5 came, and 572 came in and said, "Hey, you have to change your ordinances." Now, everybody knows...
Now, can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, from, uh...
I just do with Senate Bill 572. That's where it comes out. I don't exactly know the number from there.
You told that?
No.
It should be on the state website.
Well, I don't tell them it's a civil issue. And they came out with that dogs, there's no ordinance that can keep dogs from barking from six to nine p.m.
Okay, I would like to...
No, it didn't say, sir. It didn't say, it didn't mention the dogs.
No, I'm not... What I'm saying is what the city marshal had told me or had written, his deputies had written into the, into the police report.
It just, it restructured the ability to enforce businesses by municipalities because there are cities that were giving fines for your blinds being closed, like arts and stuff like that. So they really restricted what kind of... I don't know the right term for it, but there's some state laws that were out there that they're trying to restrict it from doing. So they restructured cities' abilities to do things and set forth certain processes through Senate Bill 572.
What was that again?
Senate Bill 572.
572?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I didn't tell you it was a civil issue. I told you that the last meeting of the council told you it was a civil issue. We are to move on to the next issue?
And they didn't tell me that.
Betty, do you have a reference? Council referencing Grant.
Mr. Frankel, you look it up.
Yes. I went over to...
No, it isn't, because I've got minutes. You told me it was in the minutes, so I went and got them. They are not in a minute. You need to get it and look it up.
A couple of weeks ago, I went over to Richland to see how they had, they had gotten down thirty, thirty-one old houses, burned down houses, not downed houses. And so I was very interested in how they did this. They did it with a grant. They started about six months ahead of time. Jesse went with me, and I appreciated his help. We spent most of the day there. And the city clerk, Susan, was very helpful. We need volunteers. They're going to be very important in this. It's going to take a lot of work from all of us. The city council needs to help out. Ellen was going to go with me, but she was sick. So, but she's very interested in prettyening up our town. And I'm, most of, most of everyone that is here right now wants this. So if we start now, come May, the grants will come, come out. And I'd like to be ready for them. We need people to take pictures. We need to do a lot of... And if we do this, get Miracle, a Merrimack Regional Involved Fund, grant writing. And we have to see about the asbestos that's in the houses. I've got permission to go through with this, get started with it from the city council.
I've got a question. If somebody has a, has a property that's maybe already down, would grants like this maybe help them as well?
I believe it would. If they allow us to remove it, we can do that. Along, if they did things like that. Once they found, one person found out how wonderful it was working, then they came and asked, "Can we be part of this?" So then it was just, it was a work.
To speed up this process, you should go and ask Delean Estes, who with Robert, almost two years ago, got all that information from Richland to present it to a council who at the time was not ready for it. And I can write down her name for you, and she might still remember some of those things. She also took pictures of all the nuisance ordinances. She put hours upon hours. The woman doesn't even live in the city.
Was that the old city clerk?
No, she was not a city clerk. She was just someone who cared because she knows, she is from Washington State, and she has family members on her city councils that works fantastic up there. They're from a tiny little town that is well-packed, and they know their laws and everything. And so she followed everything that needed following. Another volunteer, Robert Baker, and her, they went and they got volunteered. So there were quite a few people and volunteers that really tried to...
Oh, okay, I know who you're talking about.
Yes. She talked to you. Yes, thank you.
And the city of Freeburg also did the same thing there about three years ago as well.
And Pracker is also interested in this.
Deanna's gotten a big facelift, too. You probably ought to talk to someone down there as well.
We can do it if we, if we work at it. The city clerk always willing to help us with anything we need. Very, very helpful.
Betty, I want to thank you for doing hard work on that, on this. Betty, I want to thank you for doing hard work on that, on this and getting some. And I guess what you're, what you're asking from the council at this point is a motion to go ahead and proceed with trying to get the grants?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Betty, seconded by Paula. For Betty to go ahead and start working on the grant process to clean up some of these houses.
Do we have somebody anymore that writes grant scores or helps write or is that...
Merrimack Regional.
We're only allowed so many hours or something, is it?
Yes.
Eighteen, I think that's it.
I'll have to check. I think it's, it's either eighteen, yeah.
But there are people that know how to write grants.
If you have a favorite, please raise your hand. Be a focus.
Betty, one question. What about the property owners that own these properties? What do they benefit?
We have to get permission from them.
Well, what do they benefit?
Getting their mess cleaned up.
But they increase value, too?
It would increase the value of the people next door. Probably.
But we tried this, we tried this in two, we tried this in 2006. I had private investors coming in here. We were gonna buy 28 properties, and nobody wanted to do nothing with it.
I think that will now.
But I'm just saying, the property owner, if they can't, if they can't afford the property, it collapses, fall on the ground, it's burnt half down, which is a safety hazard and hazardous material, that property owner's responsible. If they cannot pay to clean it up, then that's the reason the city moved all the stuff to the county for the taxes collection, to put teeth into the nuisance ordinance, hammer them if they can't pay it. The city gets it, they can sell it and recoup their money. That was the whole idea.
They cannot take, the city cannot take the property.
After three years, yes, they can.
Just on taxes?
But I mean, but I understand that, but we can, we still get the tax.
They can take it back.
I understand that. I understand that.
It sounds easy, but it never, it never works out that well.
I know, unfortunately.
If we all work together, we can get this done.
As, as Mayor McPherson, we've tried it.
I was, I mean, I've been involved in part of that in Richland and Croggerdon, too, with the grants. It's, there's a little bit, there's more to it than what meets the eye.
There is, there is.
There's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff.
This lady, this clerk over in Richland brought out books and books.
Yeah, it's very political, and somebody has gained out of this.
Well, we gotta try something.
Oh, I agree.
The point is, is just to get started.
Exactly.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking down all for it. I'm just saying, there's, there's a lot more. We've been down this road.
There is.
Well, if they can do it in Richland, we can do it in Dixon.
That, that's right. Absolutely. You gotta be positive. You have to follow up. Lot of follow up.
A lot, a lot of follow up.
Follow it up. You have to nag them to death.
And that is true. We have to get started with at least one thing right there because so far, I have a list of things that have been discussed and nothing has ever been done since I started going to council meetings. We're talking one and a half years of constant things.
Go ahead and continue on with the things that are on the agenda.
I just wanna make one, one quick comment.
Yes.
I work in Jefferson City, and one of my coworkers, on his way to Javon and Brawla, came through Dixon. And I said, "Oh, by the way, you know, what was your first impression?" And he said, "Run Down." And that's the impression that people get when they come through this town. And it's just, that's ridiculous. It should not be this way.
It shouldn't. We need to make pride in our town.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion here? Is it possible for the city to hire a collection agency to, to do that? Go through the process and take a part of the income from it? Don't let them work at it?
For burn, I don't know.
For burned down?
I don't know how it would...
I mean, there, there's a, the...
We can look at something.
Companies hire collection agencies to collect their discs. And the city hire a collection agency to collect those, uh, do the same thing for outfits like this?
Short answers, I don't know.
I don't know. We can look into it.
Short answer, I don't know. I don't know.
Isn't it, isn't it even hire a civilian agency to do it?
It's just like the whole part of civilian, letters and so on and so forth. And it's a process from one until eventually it's...
Listen, we were making it work. We did thirty, we cleaned up thirty places. And now, everyone that cleaned up is a mess again.
Right.
All right. I would like to go ahead and move on to the next. Betty, you've got that bull by the horns and you're running with it.
All right, so, the details, huh?
So, I'd like to quickly talk about, or briefly talk about the sewer treatment plant. This past year, we've, we've had some statute changes and I challenged two of our employees to a very, very high standard, not only for the city, but also the N.R. Nathan Cox and Ernie Mantola. We had a conversation, I believe, in the middle part of July. And I said, "Here's a list of things that I want done in the next sixty days." They had them done in about fifty. When I also said, "By the end of the year, I want you to have your wastewater licenses." We have the, not only one, but three now wastewater licenses in the city because these two stepped up to the plate and they're not, met the challenge, but they exceeded it. Nathan is here. I'd like, do you mind standing up, Nathan? Yeah. I'd like to give him a round of applause. He scored a ninety-five percent. I would just like to publicly thank him and Ernie for their hard work. They have done a phenomenal job. And they, when you talk about taking ownership of something and passion in doing their jobs, they are definitely, they have definitely done that. They've risen to every challenge that this council has given them. And with that, they should be very, very, it should be commended very well. These guys are kind of the unsung heroes when it comes to city operations because at the end of the day, nobody really thinks about what happens when you flush your toilet and stuff goes into the sewer system. Well, you, you would definitely know it when you went to go fishing if these guys wasn't doing their jobs. Or if you went swimming in creeks. You'd know it if these guys didn't do their jobs. They have increased the efficiency and decreased overtime down at the plant. I love for great things out of these two. And I, I've seen great things in these two, and a hell of a lot of potential. And I'd love to see even more. So, thank you, boys. Thank you for your hard work. Now, we're gonna, Mr. John Till just had us some comments.
There's others that wanted to comment before him.
Okay, we have public comments on 535, ordinance 535. So, if you have or would like to make comments, please come up here to the...
Anybody else want to comment on this?
No, you should go first. He wanted to be last.
I don't want to be a part. I'll be a part.
First off, my comments, my remarks are not...
He can still discuss what he wants to. At this point, there'll be nobody.
Okay, at this point, Mr. Till just, you can't event, you can't finish your thoughts. However, I will be ending this meeting because the council does not have a quorum. As such, we cannot continue.
Can I finish my remarks?
You can finish your remarks, or this meeting will be adjourned.
First off, my remarks are not directed to the women of the council. They've always tried to move the city forward and backwards. We both, Mayor, both know that Dixon's in crisis. We know we're facing a bunch of severe problems, ranging from treatment plant, the sewer system, just chaos in the utilities department, our financial condition, et cetera, et cetera. If we were to consider them all here tonight, we'd be here all night. I don't want to do that. Why is it then that the only issue that seemingly consumed the agenda of the council for the last month has been an issue that is certainly not amongst the long list of those critical problems? I don't know why. Council's valuable time has been consumed by an issue that's really not all that important. I'm gonna try and keep my, my issues and my comments short since they're no longer in session. Cut it a little short. I appeal to you as mayor, if somehow they do succeed in putting this ordinance through, I appeal to you, if they do it, please help the city out and veto it. It's within your power. I implore that you consider vetoing the issue. The ordinance in effect is really, without any serious blemish, I don't know who can tell us something wrong with it. It has served Dixon well. Our city's been improved since its adoption, both in appearance and in value. Help us make the little progress we made. Help us get the council back to the serious business at hand. Get away from this stuff. This is not a problem to the city, and we know we've got a lot of problems. Let's get back to it. We're wasting time on a problem that doesn't exist. Please, Mr. Mayor, take control of the council, get it back to helping our city out of the mess it's in. Thank you very much.
Good job.
We stand to join at 6:50 P.M.